Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the 1,211th regular meeting and public hearing of the Livonia City Planning Commission. I wish to inform all interested persons in our audience that for petitions on tonight's agenda, which involve a question of zoning, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to City Council, and the City Council, after holding their own public hearing, will make the final determination as to whether a petition is approved or denied. The Planning Commission holds the only public hearing on request for preliminary plat's and/or vacating petitions. The Commission's recommendation is forwarded to the City Council for the final determination as to whether the petition is accepted or rejected. If a petition requesting a waiver of use or a site plan is denied tonight, the petitioner will have 10 days in which to appeal the decision in writing to City Council. Resolutions adopted by the City Planning Commission will become effective seven days after the date of adoption. The Planning Commission and professional staff have reviewed each of these petitions upon their filing. The staff has furnished the Commission with both approving and denying resolutions, which the Commission may or may not use depending on the outcome of the proceedings tonight. If our secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonjero is absent. Mr. Long?
Present.
Mrs. De Naro is absent. Mr. Ventura?
Is here.
Kurt Magno is here. Chairman Wolschow?
Is here, thank you. Also with us tonight, we have Mr. Mark Toramina, and we also have Stephanie Reese, both from our planning departments, and they will assist us in the meeting in giving us background information on our petitions. And they may have to answer some questions as well if we have anything for them. For the folks in our audience, we do have only one item of interest probably to anybody on this agenda, which is a public hearing item. We'll start with having our staff give background information on the item, then we'll ask the petitioner to come forward, and they can give their presentation for this item. If there's anyone else in our audience wishing to speak for or against the petition, they'll be able to come up after the presentation and let us know their comments before we make our decision. With that, we are going to start with the public hearing section of our agenda, item number one. Mr. Secretary?
Petition 2024-02-02-03 by Stonefield Engineering and Design on behalf of Hagerty Six Partners, LLC, seeking special waiver use approval for a planned general development under Section 5.02 of the Livonia zoning ordinance as amended for a mixed-use project consisting of 11 buildings, including eight with approximately 143,000 square feet of retail commercial space, grocery store, gym, dining with drive-through facility, and general retail, a four-story hotel with 101 rooms, a five-story apartment building with 170 dwelling units, and existing multi-level parking garage located on the north side of Six Mile Road between Hagerty Road and Fox Drive in the southwest quarter of Section 7.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Toramina?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject property consists of a single tax parcel, which is at the northeast corner of Hagerty and Six Mile Roads. The land area is 22.3 acres. It has 670 feet of frontage on Six Mile Road and 1,005 feet on Hagerty Road. The zoning of the property is C4, high-rise commercial. The site was developed in 1986 by Manufacturers National Bank as an operations center, and over the years, following a merger with Comerica, it was expanded to include over 360,000 square feet of office space and a 166,000-square-foot multi-level parking structure. Last year, Comerica announced the closure of the Livonia office and the consolidation of its operations into a new office in Farmington Hills. Hagerty Six Partners LLC acquired the property with plans to demolish the office buildings and construct a new mixed-use center that will include a grocery store, a hotel, a fitness studio, multiple restaurants and retail spaces, and an apartment building. This application for special waiver use approval for a planned general development under Section 5.02 covers all of the uses: retail, residential, and hospitality, and all of the associated site plan improvements. To the north of the property is College Park, which is a mixed-use development with several office buildings and restaurants. To the east across Fox Drive is the Residence Inn, Angel's Gardens, an assisted-living facility, and Buca de Pepper Restaurant. A gas station is at the northeast corner of Hagerty and Six Mile Roads immediately abutting this site. At the north end of the property, the plan shows three buildings: a grocery store, a retail space attached to the grocery store, which is labeled as Building A, and a five-story, 170-unit apartment building. The grocery store is identified on the plans as a Whole Foods, which would be 38,000 square feet. The store would be set back 270 feet from Hagerty Road with parking for 197 vehicles shown in front of the store. There would be two main entrances that'd be along the storefront. One is at the north end of the building, and the other one is at the south end of the building, with the main entrance at the north end to encourage customers to shop, or, excuse me, to park at this end of the lot. All deliveries and trash recycling operations would be at the back of the building. Building A would be attached to the grocery store. This building measures roughly 6,100 square feet and would be divided into one, possibly two tenant spaces. Next is the apartment building, which is shown in the northeast corner of the property. At its highest points, this building would be about 61 and 1/2 feet tall. The building's ground floor area is about 45,000 square feet with a gross floor area of about 225,000 square feet. The plans show 91-bedroom units, 75 two-bedroom units, and five three-bedroom units for a total of 170 apartments. In the center of the building is a landscaped open courtyard. Amenities include an outdoor pool, a spa, a lounge with fire pit, fitness room, a room with a golf simulator, pet spa, clubhouse, and community space. The building's main entrance and elevator lobby are in the southwest corner with easy access to the parking structure. Additional entry points are shown along the east and the north sides of the building. The exterior finishes of the apartment building would be brick, cast stone, ephes, and metal panels. Now, going from north to south along Hagerty Road, the plan shows another three buildings. These are all multi-tenant retail structures, and they're identified as Building B, which is at the north end, Building C, which is in the middle, and then the proposed drive-thru. All three buildings would be set back 50 feet from the right-of-way of Hagerty Road with no parking between the front of the building and the road. Building B would have just under 16,000 square feet of gross leasable space. The building would be subdivided for multiple tenants, including restaurant and camps. The next two buildings along Hagerty are Building C and the proposed drive-thru. Building C measures 9,300 square feet with three potential tenants, including at least one restaurant. The drive-thru building is roughly 5,300 square feet with two tenants, both of which are identified as restaurants. Separating these two buildings, the plans show a 20-foot-wide shared dining patio. The pickup window for the drive-thru would be on the south side of the drive-thru building with traffic circulating in a counterclockwise direction around the two buildings. The drive aisle, as you can see from this plan, commences on the north side of Building C, then loops around to the west side of both buildings before turning back east to the pickup window. It begins as a single lane and then transitions to two lanes about halfway between the buildings. Parking and customer entrances for both of these buildings would be on the east side. An enclosed trash compactor with a loading zone is shown on the south side of the drive aisle across from the pickup window. And I'll note that this is a change to the plans that you did not see at the study session, but this loading zone was added just south of the drive-thru building. The next group of buildings is at the south end along Six Mile Road where the plan shows Building D, Building E, and a hotel. Building D is a 10,000-square-foot freestanding full-service restaurant. At its closest point, it would be set back about 41 feet from the right-of-way of Six Mile Road. An outdoor dining patio is depicted in the front yard between the building and the road. To the east is Building E, which is a freestanding bank that would include drive-up services. At 2,500 square feet, Building E is the smallest of all the buildings. Three lanes for drive-up window service are shown on the west side of this building. The hotel is identified as a Hyatt House. It would have a footprint area of 20,233 square feet and a gross floor area of roughly 80,900 square feet. This L-shaped building fronts Six Mile in the southeast corner adjacent to Fox Drive. The four-story structure would be positioned approximately 79 feet from the Six Mile Road right-of-way and 74 feet from the east property line. The hotel would have 107 rooms. Its main entrance and drop-off is on the south side facing Six Mile, and this flat-roof building would have a height of about 51 feet to the main parapet line and a maximum height of 63 feet to the top of the tower. Exterior finishes include brick, veneer, cast stone, ephes, and metal. The next buildings are Building F, which is identified on the plans as a club studio; Building G, a retail space attached to the north end of the gym; and Building H, which is located adjacent to the parking structure. Club Studio is a brand that is owned by LA Fitness. The 35,000-square-foot facility will feature various fitness studios and other amenities commonly associated with a full-service gym. The main entrance is positioned near the middle of the west facade. The structure is one level with an average height of about 27 feet to the main parapet and 37 feet to the top of the tower above the store's main entrance. Building materials include various neutral tones of prefinished aluminum and painted precast panels. Building G is attached to the north end of the club studio. This 5,860-square-foot retail space is shown as two units but could easily be for a single tenant. Building H is about 15,000 square feet and is located immediately adjacent to the parking structure. Apologize, I'm looking for a plan, I can't find. And I'm missing it. Want to talk a little bit about the parking? I must have lost it. Parking is distributed, I'll go back to the main site plan, I think that would probably be the easiest thing for you to visualize, the parking. Here we go. So parking is distributed across the site in five locations, and these five lots represent about 90% of the site's total parking. These areas include, in front of the grocery store, about 197 spaces; between the retail buildings on Hagerty Road and buildings D, F, G, and H, and here there are about 194 parking spaces; the parking structure itself, which is three levels and contains 357 spaces; the area north of the hotel, which adds another 82 parking spots; and then the area that is between the bank, the full-service restaurant, and the gym. This area contains roughly 71 parking spaces. All parking areas combined provide a total of roughly 1,000 parking spaces, which translates to a ratio of roughly one space for every 75 square feet for the full-service restaurant, 1 and 1/2 spaces per apartment, 1.15 spaces per hotel room, and one space for every 270 square feet of general retail space. Looking at the traffic and circulation, there would be multiple points of ingress and egress to the bordering thoroughfares. These include two driveways along Hagerty Road, which is on the west side of the property; one along Six Mile Road on the south side of the property; two on Fox Drive on the east side; and then one to College Parkway, which is to the north. All of these driveways currently exist except for the proposed new driveway at the north end of Fox Drive, which is just south of the apartment building. There's one existing driveway to the Comerica parking lot, which is on Hagerty Road just north of the gas station, and that would be removed. The site's main entrance and exit would be centrally located along Hagerty Road, and here the plans show a new traffic signal. This 39-foot-wide road extends due east, providing direct access to the parking structure as well as the parking lots on either side. The other driveway on Hagerty is at the north end and runs along the north side of the property directly to the grocery store, the back of the grocery store, and to the apartment complex. The only driveway to the site from Six Mile Road runs north between the hotel and the bank building, connecting to the other drive-aisles and parking areas, which are on the gyms east, west, and south sides, and that driveway is located here on Six Mile. Six Mile is on the right-hand side of this drawing. The plans show two connections to Fox Drive, which is under the jurisdiction of Schoolcraft College. The college is currently working with the city and several surrounding property owners, including Hagerty Six Partners LLC, for the installation of a new traffic signal, which would be at Fox Drive, Six Mile Road, and Quakertown. The northernmost drive on Fox Drive is located just south of the apartment building and will offer convenient access to the parking structure, and that driveway is shown here. The southernmost drive runs along the north side of the hotel, and is shown here. The submission documents include fully detailed landscaping and lighting plans. We note in our report that some adjustments are needed to comply with the zoning requirements, and these are included in the prepared resolution. And lastly, it is recommended that the city and the developer enter into a development agreement that will address items pertinent to the construction and the long-term operation of this development, such as land divisions, leasing, and separation of ownership, parking, site design standards, permitted and prohibited uses, dimensional standards, and maintenance of utilities. And with that, Mr. Chairman, there are a number of items of correspondence. I'll just note that we received five department letters. One is from our finance department, one from the inspection department, one from the police department, Traffic Safety Bureau, another from our fire marshal, and another letter from our engineering division. Commissioners, each of you should have copies of all those correspondence. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have at this time. Thank you.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Mr. Toramina, for a very detailed background report on this item. It's a big project and deserves the time that you're putting into it. Is there any questions for our planning staff? No questions for our planning staff? Mr. Ventura?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Toramina, at our study session, you made mention of the requirement that the apartment complex construction be started before a certain percentage of the retail was completed. Can you address that? Can you flush that out a little bit? Remind me of when exactly the requirement is that the apartment building construction begin?
Thank you. Mr. Ventura, I don't want to misspeak, but I believe the requirement is that prior to the occupancy of any of the non-residential structures or uses on the property, that construction must have commenced on at least 30% of any residential units that are part of the planned general development.
All right, that's clear. Thank you, Mr. Toramina.
And I'll verify that I got those numbers right.
All right.
That's correct, 30%.
All right, great. Thank you. Any other questions for our planning staff? If not, our petitioner is in the audience. Feel free to come forward to our podium, introduce yourself with your name and address, and then we'll get started on your presentation.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My name is Dray Marcus. My address is 251 East Merrill, Birmingham, Michigan, 48009. I am one of the investors in Hagerty Six Partners. Thank you for your time today. Mr. Toramina, thank you for your presentation, you did a fine job in explaining what is happening at this fantastic corner of the city of Livonia. With me today, I also have my architect, Scott Bowers, our engineer, Eric Williams from Stonefield, and also Mike Labbity from Fishbeck, who's our traffic engineer. Should there be any questions for them? I want to start off by saying, we understand this is a very ambitious project, and this is very important to the city of Livonia as it is to us. We've taken a lot of time in formulating a plan that we think is deserving of this corner. We didn't just pop on buildings, we didn't just pop on parking lots. We actually put a lot of thought into this as to what the needs are for the city, what would work here, what would not work here, to make this a viable and successful development. That being said, we were able to secure Whole Foods, which I think is a testament to the area and this corner. We were also able to successfully obtain Club Studios, which is LA Fitness's premier brand. They only have about eight in the country and only major cities across the United States, and this was a pinpoint target for them once they heard that Whole Foods was joining this development. We are working with other national retailers, other users that are very interested in this development. We will get to the finish line with them as soon as we have a viable plan that's been approved by the city. We can speak to some of the uses, thank you, Mr. Toramina, along Hagerty Road. We have Starbucks that's taking the end-cap drive-thru use. Next to Starbucks, we have a quick-service restaurant use next to them in the building called, I believe, C1. We have a 3,000-square-foot user for a concept called Condado. You'll probably see them in Troy right now. They're off Big Beaver at Crooks in their city center development. They're an upscale taco restaurant, very famous throughout the country when it comes to Mexican foods. On the other side of that building, those are the only restaurants proposed for C1 and C2. As you move along north, there's Building B, and we purposely outlined two end-caps with patios to service as restaurants. On the southern end-cap is a concept called, yeah, that's a southern, correct, 2941 Mediterranean Street Food. 2941 Mediterranean Street Food happens to be our concept that we own, along with Joe Vacari and our chef Jacques Van Staden, who's a Michelin star chef that's world-renowned. It's his concept that he started, and we are investors with him, and we have six locations currently, and we're bringing one to this area. On the northern end-cap of that same building is a concept called Snooze Breakfast Bar, very similar to something like First Watch, that's up-the-road concept that's expanding rapidly throughout the United States. As you go across the interior into the bigger buildings, I believe Building H, we are slating that for a national furniture user. We are in discussions with them at the moment. Unfortunately, I'm under confidentiality agreements, and I really can't speak too much as to who they are, and that's just how they operate, and I gotta abide by the confidentiality agreements. But the other building that's proposed there, which is Building G, is also another soft, quote-unquote, "soft-good" user, so I want the board to understand that in those buildings, you will not see restaurants, you will not see heavy-intensive users, and more of a soft-good type user. Let me just mention also Building A is another user that's complementary to Whole Foods in terms of, if you look at Whole Foods across the United States, there's always users that kind of herd around Whole Foods, whether they're outdoor furniture stores, or whether they're clothing stores, or whether they're other soft-good users, but those are types of users that want to herd, quote-unquote, "around Whole Foods." I know there's questions by this board as to can we reconfigure Whole Foods to a different way. When we first started this project, as we started laying out buildings, we asked Whole Foods of that, but when you put in their operations of their truck well, the entrances, the access, their operations, the way they wanted to be presented with the investment that they're putting into the city, they needed to maximize the way their building sits, and that's what we came up with. There is a building that sits behind the gas station, which is slated for a freestanding full-service upscale restaurant. There is a lot of interest from national users to come to this city. I know there's interest of other users who want to go across the highway, there's interest that want to come here, so we're in talks with those restaurants. We have not finalized anything yet, but there will be something that's going to come to a head soon as we have a plan approved. The other billing that Mark talked about is just going to be some type of financial institution, whether it's a bank, or something like a TD Ameritrade, or some sort of that type of user, a financial user of that sort, but not a restaurant, not a intensive use. We are cognizant of the parking. As developers, we think through this thoroughly. We have our consultants to tell us that what will work and what won't work, so we have a whole bunch of cyclical uses here. There are times during the day when some buildings will be busy, other buildings will not be. There are times during the day when, even though it's a 15,000-square-foot building, you might have just a onesie, twosie-type customer, maybe five or six. You will not have 50 or 60 customers at one time if it's a furniture store, so to speak. We understand the gym is busy. The gym is busy in the mornings and sometimes in the evenings, but that trails off on weekends when your full-service restaurant is busy on weekends. So we're cognizant of the interplay between the parking and the buildings and how they interact with one another. So we think we have a pretty good handle on the cyclical uses of all the users here. Your quick-service restaurants that are along Hagerty Road are busy during, excuse me, lunchtime, they taper off in the evening, and they taper off at night, when the full-service restaurant really gets busy. The hotel, we think it's kind of on its own little island there, and it's an extended-stay version, so the parking intensity will not be as much as just a regular hotel where you sleep beds and heads. So we also thought of that, and we, you know, with our traffic study, we understand it. There's ample parking supply at that hotel. The apartments with 170 units, our goal is to activate that parking structure for floors two and three and the surrounding parking lot around the residences to house, excuse me, to park cars for all the residents of the apartment building. With the two stories on top, you have 238 parking spots on the deck. If you use a 1.5 ratio to a 1.6 ratio, I think you're right there, we might even have a surplus of 7, 8 cars to accommodate for guests. The rule of thumb in our experience with the different professional advisors that advise us, you have about a 10% delta there. That's satisfied because not everybody's home all the time at the same time, so we think that works just as well. We plan on activating the first floor also of that deck for the employees of this parking structure, excuse me, of this development, excess parking for the fitness user, and we created walkways and pathways that lead directly from the parking deck to behind buildings H, G, and the gym especially. We plan to have those very well-lit, very well-accessible, with a lot of light and air, so that way if you're working out at 6:00 AM in the morning in the wintertime, and you have it parked in the deck, you can freely make it back to the gym and utilize the gym if the parking lot is full. We don't anticipate that the parking lot will ever be full, but we never know, but we have enough studies to determine what the parking will be, and we think that it suffices. Other than that, we're very excited about this project. We plan on breaking ground or putting demolition to this building, second quarter, third quarter of this year, as soon as Comerica fully vacates. We'll be in with plans as soon as we're fully approved, hopefully, with construction plans, and we're going to begin on the retail. I heard something today for the first time, that there's a requirement that 30% of the apartment complex needs to be started. When the retail, that's news to me, but I'd like to kind of talk about that and find out what everybody's feelings is and tell you what our thought process is as developers and how we activate and start that project. But this will all, you know, it is a two-year project to fully complete, two-to-three-year project to fully complete. With that, I'm here to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus, for your presentation, and we do understand that you do have confidentiality agreements as you work through some of your negotiations with potential tenants, but we do appreciate at least providing the information that you could provide tonight as to some of those tenants for this development. Is there any questions for any of our, or from any of our commissioners for our petitioner? I'm sure there are.
Mr. Chair? I'll take a couple.
All right, Mr. Kurt Magno.
Some of the detailed questions I've got are, on the compactor next to proposed Building C2, on the different drawings that I'm looking at, some show the compactor set further west, some show it set further east, some show some shrubbery behind it to the west. This particular picture shows it in a better position in my mind. When some of the other pictures show it further to the east, your parking island will get in the way of getting that compactor picked up, so, two different drawings, which is it?
So, what you see there is our latest and greatest. We took the comments from the last meeting we had with you folks and tried to understand the issues, and we came up with this solution to provide some loading for those buildings as well as hide the compactor from the middle of the parking lot where you have all your customers in. Our compactor collection will be controlled by the waste management company at specific times, so it isn't just a free-for-all of when they can come in and can't come in. We have loading in there so the compactor, or the waste holler can pull in easily, unload the compactor and load out. We also have that for deliveries for the users of the other buildings, but that, how you see, is what we plan on building.
Okay, there's a different version- Okay, there's a different version of that there. Mark, you wanna just scroll, just so we're clear? There's another version, another page down, I think.
I apologize, I changed this in the middle here, so it might be, it might be this one right. I don't know if it's this one.
Well, okay, so we're clear. And you make sure it gets setback furthest to the west as possible. Another thing, these are all leased properties from your group? Nobody's gonna own their buildings, you're gonna lease all these properties to them?
The, the, the intention is to land lease Buildings D as in David and the bank pad, but we would still retain ownership of the land underneath it. All the other buildings will be owned by us, correct? We would construct and we would build.
Okay, let's go to the, to the apartments. And the drawings, I, I thought I saw a better drawing last week, maybe not. The, the overhangs, the porches on the upper levels, are them inset or them, are them outset from the, from the apartments?
I believe those are inset, correct, Scott? They're inset into the unit, not overhanging over the sidewalk.
Will, will there be any overhanging or is, are all four sides inset like that?
All four sides are inset, I believe. Is that right, Scott?
Correct.
Yes.
I like that. Was there a decision on the catwalk from the parking garage to the apartment?
We are pursuing it. We have to engage a few more engineers to make sure that we can build this safely and, and in a way that works for the parking deck without interfering in the structural integrity of the parking deck and also connecting the, to the apartments. But we'd like to provide that amenity to our residences and we're working on that. Our plan is to show, as, to show it because we wanna build it. If we get setbacks that we can't build it for some reason, that's just because it's impossible, we'll come back to the city and inform you of that.
Do you have an option in mind or a thought in mind, if the catwalk does not work? How do you go from floor three down to the ground floor with perhaps your groceries? And then come through, you carry it down steps, is there an elevator in there? I don't know what's in there.
There, there's elevators in the parking deck, yes.
Okay, so there is easy, easy enough to get up and down?
And we provide, we would also provide, not luggage carousels, but what do they call those things where? Yeah, things that we, there you go, package cars that we would allow our residents to use. And there'd be a few in the parking deck, a few in the hotel, and they'd rotate back and forth. And as we manage the hotel, we'd make sure they're in a spot where guests can easily, easily access them.
Okay, my, my next question is, when you come in the main entrance, main drag, just to the, to the south of the grocery store and Building A, I know we talked at the study session about traffic that comes up and then kind of finds themselves at the entry of the parking garage with their only option to go around the back of Whole Foods in their loading and, and service area. Is there any other thought, whether it's a sign or direction, to, to tell people, if you go straight, your only option really is to go in the parking garage and not go behind the, the Whole Foods? And the reason I ask that is because when you go anywhere else, you go to Foodland, you go to Bush's Market, you go to Meyer, traffic's not directed behind those facilities when trucks are trying to unload. It's best just to keep that traffic away from that activity. Is there any thought to how you could control that?
We, we can control for service vehicles only and no customer parking or no customer access. I, I, we, I don't think it's advisable or works well with Whole Foods and the other tenant to put in a gate of some sort to stop traffic. But I guess we can put in signage to say service vehicles only because you will get a smaller boxcar that makes a delivery to Whole Foods, whether it's bread, whether it's, you know, whatever it may be. It's not, they don't, they do not just get deliveries of semis. They obviously get multiple deliveries throughout the day of other uses. So that access is there for those people to come in and park behind the Whole Foods and make those deliveries or whether it's, you know, Whole Foods or Building A. If the concern is a customer who's visiting the location happens to enter that area, they're going to learn quickly that they have no business there and they're gonna circle around the building and get out again. And it may happen once, twice, three times, but there really is nothing there for a customer to go back there for. All the, all the uses that they would potentially use are in the main portion of the, of the property.
I understand that. I, I, I run a trucking company and the reason I mention that is because if it's not clearly marked or designated, you have people that visit your facility and they get involved in the truck lot. And you might have forklifts running back there, you might have semis backing up, you might have box trucks unloading. I think that's a terrible place for a, a person to go and, and kind of get lost in the back of a.
And your, and your.
Delivery area.
Your argument is adept. We have no problem putting service vehicle signage over there to indicate to somebody that there's nothing here for you. You know, turn around and go the other way.
I, I think that'd be important and it would be good for a, a customer experience because if you're not, you wind up back there and it's just not a good feeling, I, I, I would imagine.
I, we have no objection to that.
The other question I have is on one of the drawings to the north of the grocery store. Looks like there's an overhang for all the property on the north side of the grocery store. Is that for quick pickup?
That's for quick pickup deliveries, yes. And they, they have an elevation where it is a canopy that's over that parking area to protect from the elements and rain.
Is there any protection around that for, there's a little kink in the road there, you know, as you're traveling east or west, there's a little kink in the road there. See right there, Mark, it's a little kink in the road. Is there any protection to keep somebody driving through there from hitting that, that upright and, and taking that, that canopy down? If they're not careful, is there any bollard protection or anything there?
If you, if you allow us to further develop that with Whole Foods and staff, I think we can do something to accommodate that if it's, if it turns out to be a concern.
Probably is, when you get that kink in the road, you know, you know how people drive. You hit that, you hit that upright and that whole thing comes down or damages. There probably should be some, some.
So it is, it is curbed currently and if the concern is that hits it, we can talk to Whole Foods about putting bollards there and hopefully show that in our final plans to you.
I'm thinking something should be there. And then my last question for now would be trash for Building H, G, and F.
Yes.
Where is the proposed trash?
So if you.
Location for those three buildings?
So if you look behind F, excuse me, behind the gym in the parking field by the hotel, that's the trash area. And I, I, I want you folks to understand that this is not a heavy intensive use like a grocery store where they're bringing out multiple trash runs on a daily basis. So if it's a furniture store and they're boxing their cardboard, they're gonna make a run once a day to take it there and, and throw out their trash. We plan on, with our waste hauler, to have this trash handled, obviously with the needs that, that is required, whether it's every day, twice a day, every couple days. We'll, we'll monitor that and see what the use is. But we'll make sure that, that, those cans, that dumpster corral services the gym, Building H, and Building G sufficiently.
Can that location be moved toward the retention pond where that bigger tree is? It seems like a straighter shot, a little closer to the buildings.
So, that retention pond, I know Wayne County, and I'll have Eric speak to this. Wayne County has standards that we cannot touch and we cannot encroach upon for, for the retention pond. And we, we thought about adding some stuff there and how we access it, but that means building access roads to that dumpster area. And there's just things that we cannot touch. I believe, Eric, it was a 25-foot setback, correct?
25 foot.
From buffer. So we, we were limited in how many parking, or excuse me, where we could put the garbage cans and how we access them.
The, the, the way it's drawn here, and I know it's just a drawing, but the, the angle on that, on that dumpster location's bad. Right off the, right off the bat, I can see that it's bad and you're gonna have, you're gonna have trouble there. That island will get drove, driven over, it'll be, it'll be a problem, so.
Are you, are you referring to the dumpster pad behind the gym?
Yeah.
So, our thought was.
Bad angle.
Our thought was that a dumpster, semi, or excuse me, a trash hauler would drive straight in.
I, I think the, the diagram that we have in our packet, Mark, is different than the one that you're showing on the screen, so.
Yeah, that's, that's the correct one up there. There was a different one once before that we corrected. But that's the latest and greatest.
Are we talking about this, the placement of this?
Yeah, can you, can you blow that up, Mark?
You're talking about the plan that you're looking at. This, this is the current plan and I do, I did receive this just today. I thought that this matched the black and white version that was given to me earlier, but maybe not. You want me to zoom in on that?
Can you zo, can you zoom in on it a little bit?
Yeah, our color plan shows the dumpster kind of in the middle of a parking island.
Yeah, we, we changed that.
Okay.
Yep, and that satisfies the concern I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize, I keep moving this stuff around. It's right here.
Did you just move the pond?
I, yeah, I, you know.
Their, their architect and engineer's gonna be really upset about that.
Oh, much better, much better.
That looks better to you?
Oh, yeah, way, way better than what I'm seeing here.
Excellent, okay, good. We wanna make sure we keep Mr. Caremagnow happy.
Absolutely.
He's our expert on this stuff. All right, any other questions, Mr. Caremagnow?
None, no, thank you.
Okay, other questions from commissioners? Mr. Long?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The parking deck is the one existing structure that you're going to maintain, you're going to keep, right?
Correct.
Okay, it's, how, how old is that parking deck, do we know?
I do have that answer somewhere, but I think it was in the, I wanna say it was early 90s or late 80s, but I don't have the exact answer. But we have done our study on it. We have had people on there and it's in tip-top shape. Comerica spared no expense in keeping, the upkeep on that, on that parking deck.
Okay, are, are you leaving it as is? Are you gonna have to resurface it, repaint it, restripe it, anything like that?
Surprisingly, it's in very good shape. It has red doors, which do not match our theme and.
Little paint.
We'll be changing that color.
Okay.
I, I do take it back. We are popping out a door next to the big patio that you see between Building G and Building H. So there's a second form of egress for customers who park, can walk out of the back of that structure. So we are, we are putting an entrance, excuse me, an accessway over there.
Okay. The, the traffic study, I noticed that was, you know, in the packet and I was looking through that. Because this is a public hearing and it's good to have it on the, on the record. What's the, what's the two-minute summary of the parking study? Maybe the parking guy can.
I'll have my person who study does this for a living.
Sounds good. We brought him out, we may as well let him talk, right?
Right. Yeah, my keeper.
Good evening.
Good evening, my name's Mike Laberty, I work with Fishbeck. My question is about parking or traffic?
Well, so what's the executive summary on the parking study? What, what, or not on parking, I'm sorry, I said parking, on traffic. What, what is this gonna add to the area in peak times?
Oh, the numbers, you want, you want the total number of?
Sure.
New cars or stuff, something like that?
Sure.
I brought the report with me on a computer because it's like 400 pages.
Yeah, I know, it keeps crashing my iPad, but.
Yeah, let's see. Oh, you gotta hang with me here a little bit because I wasn't ready for you on this one.
And while you're pulling that up, there's intention to add a signal.
Yes.
Correct.
On Sixth Mile at the new entranceway that lines up with.
Quakertown?
No, that's on, that's, oh, I'm sorry, on Sixth Mile, yes, that's, that's not ours. It's just, the developer's participating in that.
That's right, okay.
That one's coming along with some, with another development. We're on Hagerty, the new one that's going to go in on Hagerty is gonna line up with the Saco development driveway that's over there. So both, both will get ingress and egress with that. We're working on getting that ready to go. Wayne, Wayne County's already said okay to it, so we're working on it. Let's see, the, the numbers. Couple of things that I don't wanna, if you look on page 15 of the study, then maybe you just wanna look at this later or something like that. If you can look on page 15, there's a table there that has a lot of numbers in it again.
Sure does.
Some of the uses and some of the, well, some of the uses are, it's something like internal capture. Like you would go there for one thing and you would move to another. Like you'd go, go to the gym and then maybe you'll go to a restaurant. Or you go to the gym and something else. And so those are called internal capture trips. There's a lot of adjustments, if you look at that table, for internal capture trips and pass-by trips. So an internal capture trip is kind of a trip reduction and, and pass-by trips are trips that are interrupted. Like, say you're gonna, you're, you're headed to your office, it's up at Eight Mile Road, and you're going northbound on, on Hagerty, you pull in to get a coffee and you keep on going after that. That, that would be a pass-by trip. So it's a trip that's already on the road, but it interrupts itself to, to go to the site. So all those adjustments that you see in there, that goes on. But for the most part, the new trips, you'll see in, in the morning peak hour, about 468 and then the afternoon peak hour, about 483 with the adjustments. And that's distributed over all those driveways.
And there's probably no way for you to know this, but that's, that's compared to what we see now, correct? Not compared to when that Comerica complex was.
Working, yeah, we didn't deduct anything for Comerica, if that's what you mean.
Yeah.
No, we didn't do that. That comparison, we could do that if, but no one asked for it, so we didn't.
No, I'm just.
Go through that exercise.
You know, again, I, I think that the, the uses here and the, there's excellent staggering of the uses here.
Yep.
And, you know, so that you won't have a rush where everybody's trying to park or trying to, trying to drive there at the same time for the same purposes. And I think that's excellent. I just think this is kind of important data and I think it's important that we highlight it here.
Well, I, a couple of things too at this site is that you have residential on the site. So the residential's leaving in the morning and coming back in the afternoon, kind of an opposite of what typically happens on a development like this.
Right.
So it's, there's a lot of subtle things that happen like that that will make it quite a bit more tolerable than, than it would look, look like on the surface. The levels of service are all, are all what they are today or within what would be required as far as accepted practice. And if you understand that, what level of service means, the A through F thing, A being great and F being not so great and D being acceptable, that kind of thing. So all of that has gone, we've gone through all that exercise and it's, it works. And it's gonna help the project on the west side of Hagerty, too.
Sure, I appreciate that. Okay, again, I appreciate your time coming up. I, I just, I wanted to kind of make sure we discuss these things.
Oh, sure.
On the record.
If you have any more.
Appreciate it. And then my, my last question for right now, Mr. Chairman, is just out of curiosity, what's the, what's the surface on the putting green in the apartment complex?
Oh, it's artificial grass.
Artificial turf.
Yeah, and it'd be funny, I just put one in my house for my kids and it feels just like a real green. I, I can't make those shots, so I know it's like a real green. But there's, there's, it's funny you guys said, we research this a lot and we deal with consultants all day when it comes to multifamily and there is some great product out there that looks and feels and, and just gives you the feeling like you're putting, it's not your typical pub-pug golf type of situation.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long, and also thank you, Mr. Laberty, for coming forward and talking about the traffic. Is there any other questions from any of our commissioners?
Chairman. I apologize, but I'd like, I do have a couple of traffic.
Fifty, you ask the hardest questions. I don't want your questions.
So, I, I didn't hear the answer, then maybe I missed it. But what's the net increase in traffic as a result of this development coming over? How many more cars are gonna be at the Sixth Mile and Newburgh intersection that are not there today?
Mr. Laberty, you wanna come over to the microphone, that way our vast TV audience can hear you?
So I'm just looking for a, you know.
Couple of things, well, one I didn't, I mean, per day, per hour, it's, it's kind of a hard question.
Let's just say on the average day.
Okay.
Between business hours of.
If you go back to that table, that's on page 13, there's something I should've mentioned and I didn't, so it's probably good, I'm back up here. On that table, you'll see at the far right of the table, it says weekday. That shows 11,300 cars on a weekday. So the trips, those are, half of those are in and half of those are out and it's over a 24-hour period. So it's, that's, that's the number per day.
That's a net increase of 11,000?
No, no, I don't have a net increase because I don't know what the, what the Comerica number was. We didn't figure that out.
So you haven't gone back to any records that? So you haven't gone back to any records that?
No. No. We just, it's a net increase over, over existing traffic counts, but we don't have a net increase on figuring out what it was for Comerica. Nobody asked me that, that, that would have been a good thing to bring here, I didn't think you were going to ask me that, but I.
I apologize.
I suppose I could, give me a little bit of time, I could figure it out yet tonight, but, no, I guess I can't because I don't really know how big that building was or any of that stuff, so.
From a point of interest, you're a traffic engineer, so if you add that light at Sixth Mile and Fox Drive, there will be six traffic lights between Newburgh Road and Hagerty Road on Sixth Mile.
I don't know that for sure, but.
There's going to be six traffic lights there.
Okay.
In a span of, call it two miles, mile and a half. How do you time those lights so you don't end up with a bunch of frustrated people trying to, trying to get to your new, brand-new development and, you know, stopping every five hundred feet or so?
Well, it's more, not quite five hundred, it's shorter than that, but traffic signals can be coordinated in a couple of ways. One, they have to be.
Will you have control of that? Will you be able to do that?
No, that'll be Wayne County.
Will you be able to petition Wayne County to, to come up with a plan that provides traffic light?
They have.
Moves traffic through there as, as efficiently as possible.
Part of the study, if you kind of go through it, the reason it's so thick is there's a lot of information in it from, output from something called, a program called Synchro. And from Synchro, you have, you, in order to get the thing to work right, a lot of times these networks, it's a, it's a simulation of the network, but it also has the ability to figure out what the timing and the, based on the space and the speed and the demand, what the timing would need to be set at in order to be able to get them coordinated. So this study, along with the one that went in for Fox, will, and I don't know how far to the east the Fox study went, but Wayne County will take that information and they go out and they adjust the signals and they coordinate them. If, as long as they're interconnected, if they're not interconnected, then they have these, they have these time, these controllers that are timed to set it up so they can change green when they should. They also change timing during the day, they'll reapportion the green time and the red time. Whether Wayne County gets out there right away to do that, I don't know, but you don't have to, we, it's not necessarily our obligation. They do that on their own, that's why they ask for these studies when they, when they end up with a project like this size or even, even the one that was the size of Fox. For them to approve a signal, they think about that. They don't, they don't want to put them five hundred, oops, five hundred feet apart because you cannot coordinate them very well. So Wayne, it's Wayne County's thing, they'll do it if, when we get our signal ready to finalize it and we're looking for a little bit more information for that, that same thing is going to happen on Hagerty. And we, Wayne County talks about that and we, when the thing all gets constructed, that's how, that's when the action happens and the controllers go in and the timing goes in.
That's, that's a good answer, thank you very much.
Yeah, they, yeah, they're all that way though right now, but some of the ones farther east, I don't know. So I know that if they're older and they've been there a while, it's going to take some doing to get them to work the way you're talking about.
So the, the study's going to provide the information to Wayne County to allow them to optimize this.
Yes. Yep.
That's a good, that's a good answer, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other questions, Mr. Ventura?
A couple more, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Certainly.
Mr. Marcus, we talked during the study session about increasing the landscaping behind the grocery store so that there's a screen between the apartments and the loading area at the rear of the presumptive Whole Foods market. What have we been able to accomplish in that regard?
We're kind of constrained with the layout, obviously there's that curb there that we're going to try to landscape. I, I know the concern is that the western facade of the apartment complex is going to look at the rooftop and the loading area of Whole Foods. I understand that. Speaking to, and I took that comment to heart last time and spoke to our consultants, I say, hey, I have a whole site here that commissioners say looks over at Whole Foods. And, you know, some of the banter back and forth, well, well, you're going to downtown and you're looking directly into a neighbor's, you know, apartment complex when you're in a high-rise. So I understand that. The issue's mitigated by the amenities that we provide. The issue's mitigated by, that site has the fewest number of apartments and the mid, issue's mitigated just in the location of how far it is from Whole Foods, although seams on paper, on black and white, you're on top of them, but there is ti, you know, space and distance away. In terms of landscaping, we're limited by that curb. We can add the trees, we can add bushes, we can try to screen off as much as we can, but we're limited in how this is set up and the apportioned boundary lines between Whole Foods and the apartment complex. I know it's not the ideal answer and, and I wish I could give you a better answer, but.
So the landscape plan that we looked at during the study session had junipers, which are lower shrubs. Are, are you planning on putting some taller trees in there at this point?
You know, let me, let me get my engineer here, could we put higher trees in there to accommodate wood?
We'll have to come forward so we know who we're talking to. Good evening.
Good evening, Eric Williams with Stonefield. Yeah, so Mr. Ventura, we, we did look at it, you know, I think that landscape island is six to eight feet wide at most, so it's, it's rather tight. I think Mr. Caremagna could appreciate the distance needed to get trucks through this area, right? That was kind of the pinch point. Dre and I talked about it, we said, can we squeeze some additional space out of the Whole Foods piece? When you look at the size of the tractor-trailer and that maneuvering through the rear, it's, it's not tight at this point, but any tighter, I think it would be, you know, a problem. So we can definitely look at some larger shrubs, but I think when you think about evergreen trees, right, those are going to provide the best screening in terms of visual screening. The, the six-foot island's just not going to be sustainable for them long-term between snow, salt, and then obviously the vehicle's parking adjacent. So, you know, at this point, we did select a, a lower growing shrub, easier to maintain, can handle a little bit more of the vehicles directly adjacent to it, but we can look at a larger shrub, I just don't think we're going to ever get to something like an Arbor Vitae, you know, that would get to thirty or forty feet high.
Okay, thank you, that's a, that's a detailed answer. So according to the site plan, as I looked at buildings A, B, C, G and H, and D, you've got sixty-some thousand square feet of retail space ballpark and, and.
I'm going to trust your math.
Have you got hard commitments for any of those spaces?
For?
In terms of tenancy?
Yes, absolutely, so we'll start with.
Roughly, I just, are, are you, are you roughly half leased at this point or forty percent or seventy percent, just a, just a ballpark?
Oh, I'm, I have, I have commitments for all the space, leased space, oh yeah, I have commitments, I can, if I had more square footage, I could probably put more tenants in here.
Great, that's exciting.
But yeah, but no, and, and some of it I just can't get to the finish line because I don't have a product to provide them to say, yes, I can give you the space. And that's part of the difficulty. Once we get through city council, if we're lucky enough to get to that point, I can say, yes, I can deliver this pad to you or I can deliver this building to you, let's finish up and get to lease. A lot of these tenants won't entertain that until I can assure them a delivery of some space.
All right, thank you. You did a good job of explaining the various busy times of the mix of tenancy so that the, the parking load is, doesn't overwhelm the available parking. One of the things we talked about at the study session was deliveries.
Yes.
And the fact that the delivery trucks, because you don't have, any, there's really no back to many of these buildings, there's no delivery aisle, they're going to be delivering through the front door and blocking the traffic aisles. Can, my question is, can you regulate in your leases the delivery times that are available to the tenants there so that you don't have a bunch of deliveries in the middle of the day and trucks block, blocking up the drive aisles?
Very, very good question. So the probably busiest, busiest deliveries, the most in and out are going to be buildings B and C. And so we added that loading zone there on the south side of the Starbucks to alleviate that congestion because those ten tenants shown are going to have constant in and out daily and probably a few times a day. So we alleviated that issue by doing a loading zone there. In terms of the building H, building A, the grocery store, those are going to be using the back of house and the drive aisle that Mr. Caremagna was telling us to have service vehicles and let them walk over what they need to walk over. If it's a furniture store, they're going to come with a semi, unload, they have a showroom, and it's a delivery once every so often because they deliver from their warehouses, obviously. The gym really is a one-and-done type of issue. Building, if it's building G, if it's a national perfumery, let's say, they're going to, that truck is going to park, that box truck is going to either park behind the Whole Foods service area or park behind building F, they're going to park where they're going to want to park, obviously, but they will not be in the main body of the parking field. The hotel negligible, I, I think you would agree. The, the proposed building D, the big user, we will work with them to regulate when they get deliveries. And they usually say, when are my, where, where, where are my deliveries coming in from and what time can I, can I get them in? And so we will work with them in their leases to, to do that. So the opportunities where we do, with the issue, excuse me, the uses that need implementation in their lease for when we can control them, we'll definitely do that. The other ones are kind of self-controlled with how the site plan is laid out.
Right, so you'll have the latitude and you'll.
Yes.
Great, thank you. And my last observation was, there was some concern about the size of the walkway between the parking deck and, and the.
Behind building H.
Building H and you were going to expand that or do something to make that a little more pedestrian-friendly so that it wasn't.
What is the size of that sidewalk?
Six feet? Six feet? Six-foot sidewalk, well-lit, it's, again, we're constrained by delivering space that's suitable for a tenant, for a furniture user because they can't just have a skinny bowling alley, obviously, and providing enough walkway. And you, you know, we, I want you to also consider that we have two sets of doors. So there's a set of doors right at the end where that triangle patio is, so if somebody is parked in that structure, they can exit immediately to the, right, there will be a door popped over there.
But you're adding a door.
Yes, we're adding a door there. So really that walkway is a service walkway for the users here to throw out garbage, but if a pedestrian does happen to come through there, they could still come in, but we're going to point our pedestrians and our users to use that other door that we're, we're putting in.
And Mr. Marcus, I'll apologize, I, we also talked about creating some recreational areas, public areas along the, I guess it would be southeast, southeast wall of the parking deck adjacent to the pickleball courts, if that were possible. Have you been able to determine that you can do something there?
So again, we're constrained by Wayne County with, are you talking about the area where the, that, behind the parking structure?
The dark green.
Yes. We, we, this is a conversation we have to have with Wayne County because we, we're still under their jurisdiction when it comes. So the plan is if we can get into Wayne County, show them maybe a walkway around the entire perimeter of the detention pound without interfering with the privacy of the residences because we don't want just anybody being able to walk into the residences, provide a fence and a walkway area there. We will have that conversation with Wayne County, but we are limited in scope of what we can and can't touch there. So if, if they do allow us, we're more than happy to put it in.
Okay, Mr. Marcus, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's been very cooperative, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ventura, any other questions for our petitioner?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Caremagna.
The, just some clarity on the apartments, a little bit about the rate for the apartments, the, the, the size of the apartment units, where do you intend to draw people from for these apartments? And, and who's going to manage the property?
So, few things. Let me just kind of talk about the amenities in the apartment, you've seen the amenities, pickleball court, tennis court, dog wash, golf simulator, golf putting. We plan on putting stainless steel appliances throughout our kitchens, granite quartz countertops throughout, engineered of wood or porcelain floors, Euro-style cabinetry. So we, we are going to deliver the best-in-class when it comes to residences in Livonia. And, and we have probably best-in-class grocers, we have best-in-class gyms, so we want to take that theme out with best-in-class apartment complex that we offer here. We want to draw professionals, we want to draw people who work in this area, that live in this area, Northville, Western, Western Livonia area. We are looking for stable families that come in here. So it's really professionals that want to live and, live and be in this area, that would visit this type of development, that would, you know, utilize this type of development. Price points would probably be on the high side of the market, to be quite honest with you, just with all the amenities that we're offering. To, obviously, we need a, a return on our investment and it's going to have to be a price point that makes that return on investment with all the amenities we're offering and the upscale amenities that we're giving and the add-ons to the type of apartments that we're building.
Okay, who's going to manage that property?
We are talking to several, our consultant currently is Friedman, which manages over, I think, eighteen thousand apartments in the metro Detroit area. They do a fine job, they were our consultants when it comes to planning and planning out the amenity space, the size of the rooms, the number of ones and twos, our parking calculations, and we've been working diligently with them and that's who we plan on having manage at this point.
Will there be a, will there be a, an office on-site where someone's there all the time?
Yes, there'll be an office on-site, security on-site, manager on-site, twenty-four-hour emergency service on, you know, obviously. So we'll always have, we'll not be just abandoned and lock the doors and let residents fend for themselves. We will have some eyes and ears on this at all times.
And Friedman is the management company?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I'm done, thank you.
All right, very good, thank you, Mr. Long.
Mr. Chair, thank you, just one follow-up thing, I know with the traffic study we talked about, and you said that you didn't have the comparison for Comerica. Should you advance after tonight, you'll go to city council, I think it would be a good idea to have that comparison when you go there. Thank you.
So Long, just so I'm clear, you wanted, the board would like to know if Comerica was operating at full capacity, the number of cars there at that time versus what I'm bringing to the table at this.
Yeah, in its heyday, right, because that's, that's, traffic around there is challenging to begin with.
Yep.
Okay, so how mu, what are we adding to it, what are we, what are we doing here? And it's, you know, it, it's different now than it was when Comerica was in its heyday there. And so I want to compare apples to apples.
Just with the conversations that I've had with Mr. Labby and his group, I think at the end of the day, we make this a more safer environment by adding that traffic light on Hagerty because now you're controlling ins and outs with two major shopping centers on both sides of Hagerty. They're ve, both very, very busy. And now you've put a traffic control device to make sure that cars leave and are not trying to zoom out before the next car comes and you can actually leave at a traffic control signal. So I think at the end of the day, this is a much safer option that we're providing to this, to this area.
I, I agree with you on that, I just, you know, I'm worried about volume and making sure that people can get where they're going to.
Understood.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Long, that's actually a very good point because I, I know back in, in Comerica's prime, when they were a very busy operation, we, we had heard numerous complaints about people not being able to get out of there, you know, when, when the mad rushes, you know, everyone's trying to leave, it's very difficult to get out of that, that property sometimes. So these lights definitely would help, so, but I, I agree with the thought process, that it'd be nice to have a sense of what kind of traffic impact this is going to be in comparison to Comerica when it was at its prime. It's a different animal, you know, you're talking about an office building where people sit for eight hours a day versus people a little bit more transient coming and going into a retail development. But, but you also have a residential component and other things that. But, but you also have, uh, a residential component and other things that, uh, you know, will soften the, the impact on the traffic. So, uh, if there's no other questions at this time, I do have a few questions I'm gonna ask you, sort of high level, uh, questions, uh, Mr. Marcus. So, I don't wanna get too deep into questioning as, as the chairman, but, uh, um, you, you, I, I just wanna understand a little bit about your background in terms of, uh, we haven't worked with, with you before on developments in the city. So, uh, what is your wheelhouse? So, this is a mixed-use development. Are you, are you more into the residential side, more on the commercial side? Where, where do you come from?
Um, well, I'll tell you a little story.
And your partners, I suppose.
Um, I am an attorney by trade. Um, went to college at Wayne State University, went to Wayne State Law, graduated Wayne State Law in year two thousand and worked as an assistant Oakland County prosecutor for seven years. Um, left there and did criminal defense. And I got burned out doing criminal defense. I said, I gotta find something else to do. And I knew some wealthy people. I said, what do these people do? And they, uh, I realized they do real estate. And I went down the road and I bought my first shopping center in two thousand and six, I believe. It was a little eight thousand square foot shopping center in Berkeley. And it was very interesting to say, okay, you collect this much in rent, you send this much back to the bank and you have this much left over. And I didn't work for it. It was, it was, it was amazing concept. So, I got the real estate bug, so to speak. Uh, COVID, excuse me, uh, the recession, the great recession hit and I was lucky enough to partner with some partners who were very liquid, who had faith in me and I was blessed. And we bought a lot of real estate during that time because we were able to buy it cheap. We turned those, whether they were raw land, value-added shopping centers, to today, over a million square feet in real estate that we control in our portfolio. We have four projects under construction right now. We are doing a hundred and twenty thousand square foot building in Birmingham, downtown Birmingham, five stories with, uh, retail, office, residential. We are, uh, doing a hundred thousand square foot shopping center in Grand Blank, Michigan with retail. We just completed a twenty-five thousand square foot, uh, commercial development in Rochester Hills along with another hundred thousand square foot shopping center in Rochester Hills. I was in the midst of remodeling and retenanting. And my second shopping center ever that I bought, just down the street in Rochester Hills, from these other two projects, a thirty thousand square foot shopping center that is what I was told the most expensive piece of real estate in all of Rochester Hills. So, we take pride in what we do. Uh, we don't just, um, buy things to buy things. We really think them through. We really, um, I, to me, it's like when I was a kid, I built Lego. And it's like putting Lego pieces together. What can you create? So, I, I put a lot of input in terms of what the architecture looks like, what the spacing look like, looks like. And Scott and Eric will tell you that I've taken plans and ripped them up and said, let's start over because these don't work. So, we take a lot of pride and put a lot of effort into our development. So, we take all our expertise from our past experiences of what, uh, we've built and done and poured it out into this. And that's why I said we, this is probably taking the most time I've ever taken in any shopping center development that we've had with what we've done with them, with my consultants here. So, I, I really wanna stress how much thought we put into this to make a quality development to this corner. And that's our background. And our partners are real estate investors. Tom Shafu, sitting next to me, is a builder, builds custom homes. He will be building the residences. His portfolio, the probably lowest, lowest house he's ever built is probably four million dollars, as high as twenty-five million dollars in the state of Michigan. Uh, he can, I think Mark has seen pictures of the homes that Tommy's built. So, he brings that expertise, he brings that touch to this as well. So, good, good partnership. Uh, we've been very successful and we hope to continue.
Well, I appreciate that. So, you do have a good mix of both retail and residential experience, which
And hospitality.
Right, and this is, because it's a mixed-use development, you, you need to have those, those areas of expertise. So, I appreciate that. In terms of the, uh, uh, investment that you're making into this property, what, what type of project are we looking at in terms of dollars?
Um, a lot.
I imagine.
Um, it's, it's, it's in the, um, high, high, high eight figures, probably at the end of the day.
Okay.
If it doesn't reach nine.
Okay.
If, once you include everything, um, a lot.
And you're looking at about a two to three-year timeline on the development?
Yes, and, you know, if I can ask a question, I know there was a proposal to say, and I, I just wanna flush that out a little bit because I, I don't like to go into things unknown a little bit. So, I, I heard a proposal that thirty percent of the apartment needs to be built or started. I, I wasn't sure exactly what that was. It kinda went quickly and I didn't catch it. Uh, can someone expound on that a little bit for me, please?
I'm sure Mr. Tormi can. I, I, I think, I, I would just say that the, I think the general intent of the zoning ordinances are the, the planned use development, part of the ordinance is to ensure that, uh, residential components, when they're in these mixed-use type developments, are, are started and, and developed and not, it just doesn't become a retail development. And that, is that correct in my assumption, Mr. Tormi?
That is, that is accurate, yes. So, we, we view this as a unified plan, uh, when it involves both residential and, uh, commercial. And wanna see those components come together simultaneously. Uh, the thirty percent was, uh, somewhat arbitrary, um, standard that was placed uh, in the ordinance with the understanding that these types of projects, um, will ultimately be under, uh, the guidance of, of an agreement. Uh, and that, uh, some of those items can be negotiated with council. So, uh, should, um, the petitioner present, uh, his case to council that would wanna vary that standard, uh, council can consider that and, and make those adjustments that would be uh, embodied in that development agreement. So, it, it is a, it is a guideline, it is part of the ordinance, but it is something that, um, we do see as an important, um, aspect to, again, bring these, the, the, the development together, um, as a unit, as a unified plan.
Right, so, Mr. Marcus, just so you understand, it's, we're at the point of the, the planning commission is gonna make a recommendation to city council. You're gonna go onto city council, have a public hearing and a, and a, uh, approval of that process as well. And they will have the ability to negotiate, uh, some of those terms of that, uh, process with you.
I guess what I'm not clear upon is, once I start the development, let's say I build all these buildings, the Whole Foods building, A, B, C, D, E, F, and G. Are you saying at that point, once those buildings are built, you need to be starting on the apartment complex? Is that my understanding? I guess I'm, I'm just trying, I just need clarification of, is there a start-stop that must happen on the apartment complex?
Yeah. I'll let Mr. Tormi to speak.
I'll, I'll just point out an example and, and we've only had one, uh, and that was the Hagerty Center project where the retail phase, uh, started, uh, for that project started, um, initially uh, and was underway. And as they approached, uh, their point of occupancy for uh, either one or both buildings, I cannot recall the details, uh, we evaluated it at that time and determined that because, uh, the apartments, um, at least one of the two buildings, uh, was, uh, underway in the ground, so to speak, that that would, uh, meet that, that particular requirement. So, we, we looked at it on a, you know, uh, to satisfy that, uh, that. It didn't mean that the apartment had to be, um, had to have, have, be ready for occupancy at the time the retail, uh, was receiving its certificates. Uh, we just needed to know that it was well underway and, uh, there was gonna be a commitment towards the completion of the residential phase of that development that would, you know, soon follow. So, it was within, I think, eight months, uh, maybe, maybe a year when the residential part was occupied, uh, following the, uh, uh, the occupancy of the retail.
If that makes sense.
Does that help, Mr.?
I, I would, I would just like to make this point. There's nobody in this room that wants to finish this project faster than I do. Um, and, and let me just run through a scenario for you folks so you understand just from a developer's side, how things may or may not occur. I build all these buildings and then, um, at that point, I'll get a notice saying, hey, you have to start an apartment complex. Well, what if at that point, there's a major catastrophe or the financial market meltdown? There's no liquidity, we're in a recession, we're in a depression, whatever, we're in COVID. And there is no financing to start apartments, there's no construction work to start apartments. There's so many factors that I cannot account for to say, no, you must start because you finished these buildings. I, I, I think that's a, a, a slippery slope in, in terms of forcing a developer, say, you must start now that you've finished this. Inherently, it's kind of self-policing because nobody wants to sit on empty land. The developer wants to finish this and get it off the ground. But if, if there are, you know, circumstances that are beyond my control, how is one supposed to account for this? And I just wanna leave that with the notion, uh, as we go to city council.
Yeah, that's definitely a, a conversation that I think would be best served at the city council level because
I understand that.
We, we don't have the ability to, to negotiate the terms of that with you at this stage of the game. Uh, it's probably a little premature. But, uh, I understand your, your thoughts and I, hopefully you understand the city's intent as well that we don't want, uh, someone to, uh, you know, basically just skip out on, on part of their promise of, of what they, what they're gonna develop at the site as well. So, it's, it's, it's a, there's a balance.
Understood.
So, um, the other question I had for you is, I, I don't know if you, if this is a, something that you're gonna care to answer or not, but, uh, hypothetically, if, uh, you get ran into a situation as you're developing this property, because you are developing it in sort of phases, you get to a point where you've, you've built out some of the, the, you've built out the Whole Foods, of course, you've built out, uh, uh, some of the other retail, may, hopefully you've built out some of the, are starting to think about the apartments. And you get to a situation where you realize that there's not enough parking at the site or, uh, the plan isn't gonna work as you originally proposed it. Is there something that can, that you would give up on this site?
You know, I, I think as a, as a prudent developer, we, we need to have that answer, we need to have that answer before we start. Uh, we're too late in the game, if I'm worrying about that, at that point. So, we better have our uses intact. We better understand what our uses are, uh, be comfortable with our traffic study and our consultants say that will still work. So, I think that's a, that's a situation that we will have answered way before we start. And I would leave it at that. In terms of giving things up, uh, you know, I need, I need more retail.
Right, yeah.
There's more demand than I have space here. So, it's really hard to give up when, you know, and that's a testament to this location in your city, you know, and, and that's, that's a good thing. So, we will have the parking situation figured out and, you know, and we think we're there. There's always some tweaks and there's always, you know, we, we are always studying this and always taking a second look at things. But I think we're there in terms of parking, especially with that deck.
Okay, great. And I, I do wanna point out that we, we discussed our study meeting, uh, the, the flow of pedestrians around the property, some of the walkways that, that exist. And, and even the fact that you have access to, uh, the bike path along I two seventy-five and Sixth Mile, which is very close to this property, because you do have residential on site, you may have some fitness-minded, uh, residents living there that would like to make use of those amenities. So, I'm glad that you've thought about some of those things and you're gonna incorporate those into the design. Because we just, uh, we just came from the state of the city, uh, presentation earlier today and, uh, the mayor reminded us that we do have a bike-walk plan here in the city and that, you know, we are always looking for opportunities to enhance, uh, uh, physical fitness and biking and walking, pedestrian-friendly uh, connections as well. So, so, thank you for trying to incorporate some of those into your development.
Thank you.
Uh, with that, if there's no other questions right now for any of the, from any of my fellow commissioners, I wanna look and see if there's anyone in our audience wishing to speak for or against this item. Feel free to come forward. I'd like to get your comments. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Jim Crowley. I'm a resident at sixteen one oh six Blue Skies Drive, Laurel, it's in Laurel Park, South Two. And, uh, I've been a resident there for a number of years. I've owned the house for a number of years. And I'm also a real estate investor and I have a number of properties, uh, within the city of Livonia. You know, I'm happy to see this redevelopment. I think they've done a pretty nice job bringing some high-end, uh, retail stores, uh, you know, Whole Foods, Starbucks and so on, uh, twenty-nine forty-one, all places I go to, LA Fitness, belong as a member. My concern is, I feel like we're playing Tetris here. It's just too tight. Uh, on Saturday morning, when I leave to go out to whether it be Home Depot or I get on the freeway because I can't turn right at Sixth Mile and Hagerty. It's just too congested, it's too backed up. Uh, it's just too tight. I get on the freeway and get off at Seven Mile. I cannot make that turn. I sit and wait. You're blocked up. Coming back from Home Depot, unfortunately, I have to cut through Quaker Town because it, the line is backed up to turn left onto Sixth Mile. I do this every weekend. This is on Saturday. So, it's just too tight. I'm concerned about that. I think we need to eliminate, this is just, the impact is too high. It's too crowded, there's not enough green space. Uh, I don't wanna see them go away. I think they've got some great, I'd love to see Comerica, I think it's been an eyesore, uh, jutting out almost into Sixth Mile. I don't know how that ever got passed. It's horrible. Uh, I'd love to see new development. This is an opportunity to really think about it. Uh, I see one of the great features of a pond and I get, it's near the apartment building, but you know, go to every other city and they've got a beautiful, um, green space with, with a water feature out toward the front uh, of the development. This is hidden back on Fox Drive. Uh, I'd like to see that move forward. I think Whole Foods, it's great, except we have Cantoros and Trader Joe's and a number of them. I'd like to see a commitment before we vote yes for this, from these retailers because, you know, this is what makes this development, is having these high-end developments, you know, at Livon, you know, here in Livonia, uh, like some other higher-end communities. So, I love that, but I wanna make sure that those are the, those are the, um, retailers that are coming in and not switched out halfway through, making, you know, so we don't need another random supermarket. We don't need another, another random fitness center. You know, we've got a Planet Fitness on every corner. Um, I just don't think we're ready yet. I, I, I'd like, we're, you know, we're diverse here, we're multi-use. It's concrete, looks like a concrete jungle to me. Um, it's, we, we need to, we've got far too much here. I can't imagine what that corner would be like, uh, with that much traffic. Um, like I said, I drive it every day and it's impossible. Um, before we vote yes on this, why don't we go back to the drawing board? Also, other communities are starting, you're starting to see where the stores are coming forward. So, you'll see the, the face-fronting store uh, with parking behind it. I'd love to see Whole Foods brought forward or turned sideways, um, so it's facing, uh, Hagerty Road. Um, another hotel, I think that's too much. I mean, we're talking about a lot of traffic here and we don't have that answer yet. There's too many unanswered questions. I think we need to come back and address some of these questions such as green space. I, I think Mr. Care Magna brought up, um, you know, navigating the trucks through that. I mean, you need a shoehorn to get through this development. We haven't seen it yet, but it's just, it's too tight, it's too much here. I think we need to, you know, we need to lose something here, uh, and put some more green space in it. Let's, this is a big corner and it's, it's the gateway into Livonia. I mean, we're at Northville, Plymouth, right in the corner here. Let's really, let's, let's dress up Livonia. I mean, I think we're there with some of the retailers we're bringing in, but we don't need another hotel of that impact. And we don't need more parking, you know, to drive into the city and you see parking, parking lots and cars. Let's have some green space and really talk about that landscaping. And apartment dwellers that are paying that kind of money, are they really gonna wanna look at the top of air conditioners? I mean, it, it's, it's too much. So, I'm gonna ask you to please, you know, not necessarily vote no, but either, either, you know, adjourn this and, and come back with some of these questions that are answered. So, we have definitive, so we have commitments from retailers. We have some green space. Let's really make this a, a sharp plan before we move forward.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Crowley. Appreciate that. Anyone else in our audience wishing to speak on this item? Good evening, sir.
Hello, my name is Andrew Hitis, thirty-four zero zero eight Fairfax Drive, Livonia, Michigan. Um, I just wanna mention a few things, uh, about the traffic because I'm also concerned. I didn't hear any specifics from, uh, their traffic engineer, but I can give you some specifics. Um, I just walked in here today. I was just interested in what kind of stores were there. And I can tell you that the distance from like Sixth Mile Road to the first light north of there, which is College Drive, I believe, is fourteen hundred feet. The second light, which is Cross Road, where the, the church is, right, is twenty-two hundred feet. So, it's another eight hundred feet from there. Um, if you're gonna put in a light that's south of College Drive, the left-hand turn lane, as you're going south to get onto Sixth Mile, often backs up ten cars, at least fifteen, sometimes more in the, um, in the winter time when it's, uh, holiday shopping time, right? So, you got a lot of traffic from REI, Kroger, et cetera. So, if you're talking even ten vehicles, that's So you've got a lot of traffic from REI, Kroger, et cetera. So if you're talking even ten vehicles, let's just say twenty feet per vehicle, F one fifty's twenty feet long, five feet between each vehicle, you're talking two hundred fifty feet, right? And that's just ten cars. It's not a lot. And then, um, you know, two hundred fifty feet, track that off to fourteen hundred feet. You're getting, and then, you know, you want a traffic light between fourteen hundred feet. So let's say you put it seven hundred feet, right? So seven hundred feet minus two hundred and fifty feet, you got like, you know, four hundred and fifty feet there. That's not a lot for somebody to make a left-hand turn and cause another traffic jam. What are you going to do with the timing of the lights? If the lights are timed the same, you're really not gaining benefit of that light. If they're timed different, you're causing more jams. So, you know, I've got an issue with adding a light on Hagerty. And I would say, um, you know, maybe if you do add a light, it's right-hand only. And I think that the right thing to do is perhaps look at Fox Drive and expand the size of that. Maybe you want it to be wider.
Yeah, that's a difficult intersection.
You know, yeah, it's a real difficult intersection. And I also want to point out that, you know, it's not Livonia on the other side of Hagerty. It's Northville. So, you know, you kind of want to be good neighbors. You don't want to cause congestion for them, uh, potential for more traffic accidents and everything like that. So that's all I wanted to point out was, uh, was that. Um, I also want to mention in terms of, uh, apartments and people looking down on air conditioners and everything, that's my feeling too, but I look at Costco and that apartment complex there, that place is, is booked. You know, they got all kinds of people. So people like living in apartments, um, you know, and, and having gyms and having, uh, an easy life, not having to maintain the, uh, the grass and, and this and that. And, uh, they don't seem to mind, uh, looking down at, at air conditioning units. So I, I wish the project luck. I just wish that, uh, you know, we're really cognizant about the traffic that's already there. Um, maybe not put in extra light, maybe limit it to right-hand turn, turn only. And then maybe until we know exactly what's going on with the traffic, because we don't have specifics, don't allow those restaurants to be, um, drive-throughs right off the bat. You can always, um, put in an underground conduit. You can put in, um, you know, just so when it comes time, if, if a drive-through is okay, you can put the electricity in a lot faster, but off the get-go to approve a drive-in with traffic being unknown, I think it's too much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roidis, for your comments. We appreciate that. And for, uh, um, anyone else in the audience on this item, uh, you know, our, our petitioner is taking notes and, and keeping track of these comments. So, uh, hopefully they'll, um, be, be incorporating those as well. Is there anyone else in our audience wishing to speak on this item? I don't see anyone else coming forward. Uh, Mr. Marcus, uh, is there anything else that you'd like to say, uh, based on comments that you've heard?
Anything further? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. If there's no other comments, uh, is there any other questions from any of our commissioners for our petitioner before we close the public hearing? I don't see any other questions from any of our commissioners. So I will close the public hearing at this time and a motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ventura.
I'll offer an approving resolution. To request to develop a planned general development consisting of eight retail commercial buildings, a four-story hotel, a five-story apartment building, and an existing multi-lever parking garage at thirty-nine two hundred Six Mile Road is hereby approved, subject to the city council approval and the following conditions. Number one, that the site plan overall, site plan north and site plan south mark drawing C two, C three and C four respectively, all dated January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, as revised, prepared, prepared by Stonefield Engineering and Design, are hereby approved and shall be adhered to, except as modified below. Number two, buildings D and E and the hotel are approved in concept only. And more detailed plans including site, landscaping, floor and elevation shall return to the planning commission for further review and approval before any building permits are issued. Number three, the landscaping plans marked drawing C seven, C eight, C nine, C ten, C eleven and C twelve, and the landscaping details marked drawing C thirteen, all dated January thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, as revised, prepared by Stonefield Engineering and Design are hereby approved and shall be adhered to, except that two additional full-size trees shall be added to the Six Mile Road frontage to meet the ordinance requirements. And modifications shall be made to the area between the grocery store and the apartment buildings to provide a better, a better visual screen using full-sized evergreen trees. Number four, they, that the exterior elevations of labeled apartments, sheets A three hundred and A three oh one, grocery sheet, sheet A three hundred, retail building A, sheet A three hundred, retail building B, sheets A three hundred and three oh one, retail building C one, sheet A three hundred, retail building C two, identified as retail drive-through, sheet A three hundred, retail building G, sheet A three hundred, and retail building H, sheet A three hundred inclusive, all dated January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, prepared by Bowers and Associates Incorporated are hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number five, the exterior elevations for building F, proposed gym, dated February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, and prepared by Club Studio, is hereby approved and shall be adhered to. Number six, that this approval is subject to the petitioner submitting a development agreement to be executed, executed between the city and the developer, addressing items pertinent to the construction of the project as well as the long-term operation of the development, such as, but not limited to, divisions, leasing and separation of ownership, parking, site design standards, permitted and prohibited uses, dimensional standards and maintenance of utilities. Number seven, all rooftop mechanical equipment shall be concealed from public view on all sides by screening that should be compatible with the material and color of the other exterior materials of the buildings. Number eight, the walls of the trash recycle enclosure shall be a minimum of six feet in height and constructed out of the same masonry used in the construction of the buildings. Or in the event of a poured wall is substituted, the wall's design, texture and color shall match that of the buildings. The enclosure gate shall be solid steel or durable, long-lasting panel fiberglass. Number nine, the site, site shall meet the city of Livonia or Wayne County Stormwater Management Ordinance, which ever applies, and secure any required permits, including solar erosion and sedimentation control permits. Number ten, all light fixtures shall not exceed a mounting height of thirty feet and shall be aimed and shielded to minimize stray light trespassing across property lines and glaring into adjacent roadways. Number eleven, the overall, overall average illumination level for the parking lot shall be one-foot candle as provided under section seven point two-two of the zoning ordinance. Number twelve, only conforming wall signage is approved with this petition and any additional signage shall be separately submitted for review and approval by the zoning board of appeals. Number thirteen, that no LED light band or exposed neon shall be permitted on this site, including but not limited to the buildings or around windows. Number fourteen, that the specific site, that the specific plans referenced in this approving resolution shall be submitted to the inspection department at the time the building permits are applied for. And number fifteen, under section thirteen dot thirteen of Livonia zoning ordinance, as amended, this approval is valid for one year only from the date of approval by city council. Unless a building permit is obtained, this approval shall be null and void at the expiration of said period.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, there's a motion that's been made by Mr. Ventura, supported by Mr. Long, to recommend approval of this development. Is there any discussion on the motion? If there's no discussion, if the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Ventura.
Aye.
Mr. Long.
Aye.
Karen Magno votes aye. Chairman will show.
Votes aye and motion passes. This will go to the city council with an approving recommendation. You'll have a, another public hearing and meeting with them and hopefully you will have good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. Thank you.
Mr. Secretary, there is, uh, one more item on our agenda in regards to minutes.
That's the approval of the minutes of the one thousand two hundred and ten public hearing, regular meeting, held by the planning commission on March fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
All members were present with the exception of Mr. Karen Magno, uh, uh, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Mr. Long, supported by?
Ventura.
Mr. Ventura. And, um, because we need four votes, so we're going to let Mr. Karen Magno vote on this anyway. Uh, if you want to call, or actually if you have no objection, I think we can show four.
Let's show four. One, two, three, four.
The minutes?
Mm-hmm.
We need it. So there we go. Minutes have been approved and that takes us to the end of our agenda. Is there anything to come before the commission? If there's no other business, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
And we have a motion by Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Ventura, to adjourn. Again, if there's no objections, I think we can safely show four on that. So we'll mark four on that and that ends the meeting tonight. I would like to thank our Livonia television staff for bringing this meeting to the community. And if there's no other business, I'm going to adjourn this meeting at eight forty-two PM and wish a good night to the city of Livonia.